Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order a regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, October 11th, at 7:00 PM on October 11th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Miller, will you take the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Walker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirwin.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Show Councilmember DeMichael absent and excuse, please.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
You do have a quorum with six members present.
Thank you. Move on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, October 11th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 6-0. We have no recognition tonight. Do we have anybody here from the county or the state? I do not see them. No presentations. Move on to community events. Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to call to your attention and the publics that in two weeks, we've got the Community Shred Day. It will be on Saturday, October 23rd, from 10:00 AM till 1:00 PM in the City Hall parking lot. We ask that you enter from central. And again, we're going to be accepting at least five paper grocery bags or cardboard banker boxes of sensitive paper per person or per household for shredding. Also, we're going to be doing a prescription pill collection also, so that we'll get a proper disposal. And we would like to ask that you bring in a non-perishable food item for donation to the home pantry. And I was also asked to stress that they're also in dire need for personal hygiene products also. So canned goods and something like that would be a big help for the home pantry. Last time we did it, we collected a lot of food for the pantry. And I think it's a couple canned goods for the shredding service, I think is a great trade-off. Again, we'll be out there Saturday, October 23rd, from 10 until 1:00 PM for Shred Day.
I know in the past, we had the Secretary of State, a mobile trailer out there. They're not coming out anymore.
Correct. They've not.
I don't want the public to think they come and renew their tabs or whatever. So there's no Secretary of State going to be at the Shred Day.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, moving on to communications. If everyone recalls, the last meeting, I mentioned that I spoke with DTE and stated that DTE advised me that they would be spending over $70 million in the region dedicated to tree trimming, to reduce power outages that everyone has experienced this past year. We had a meeting with them today. We've got a slide up on the projector. After speaking again this morning with DTE representatives, I asked if they could send us a slide that indicates the number of storms that we've experienced. On the screen is a slide that was sent to us that shows the number of storms that DTE has had to deal with this past year. A Category 2 storm marked in red is a storm that affected more than 300,000 residents. A Category 1 storm in orange affected between 150,000 to 300,000 residents. And a large storm marked in yellow affects around 100,000 residents. If you notice, the year is not over yet, and the area has experienced the most major Category 1 and 2 storms than in any other years. Most importantly, the skinny black line on the top of the columns indicates the average number of days between each storm. As you can see, we have not only suffered a lot more major storms than in other years, but we are averaging only a five-day break in between the storms. This does not leave a lot of time for DTE to make major repairs from the last storm or keep up with everyday repairs as needed. During our meeting today, DTE declared that this is the worst year for storms that they have experienced in their 150-year history. Again, the worst year ever in 150 years. We're talking rain and wind. Wind is what really causes the power outages. It knocks the branches over on the trees. I just wanted to bring this information to our residents as soon as we were made aware of it. It doesn't help when our power outages go out, but it does add to the reasons that we are having so much trouble this year. The storms this year have been big and are hitting us very often. They are making, they've found some equipment that needs repaired at various substations within the city, and they will be making those repairs in the next few weeks. They're ordering more tree trimming in the next year. And DTE will be having a Zoom meeting for all of Wayne County coming up. And when I find out the date and how you can get on that, if they'll answer questions, we'll get that information to you. But DTE is aware of the problem, and we're not very happy with all the outages, but they're letting us know that these storms are the worst they've ever seen, and they're doing their best to make repairs. So I wanted to pass that information on. Also, I see Mr. Bucelli here. He, his group handles our building administration and our building inspection services, but he also does the road inspections. And since you're here, can I get a road update on our side streets where everything, where we're at as of today?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council. Hullett Street is complete, hutchless items, everything 100%. That's from warranty maple wood.
Okay.
On Hennepin, we have finally coordinated with Hutch Paving's path director. They are going to notify us in the next two days when they are coming in to replace the approaches. And at that time, they are going to get James Street, which is scheduled to be paved tomorrow, the first lift of asphalt on James Street tomorrow. Hutch has proceeded to do shoulder work on Farmington and on Pierce, and started their rough landscape on the same streets, Pierce and Farmington, and will continue on Hennepin once the driveways are replaced. Sidewalk program, GB Summit, I talked to them this morning, they're scheduled to be in late in the week or early next week. And they figure they've got about three weeks worth of work to bang out the sidewalk program, which I agree. The miscellaneous road patch, Hard Rock, is scheduled to come in next week, and they committed to us, once they come in those states, that they're finished. So.
That's the concrete patchwork, right?
Yes, the patchwork, the road work.
Sectioning.
Everybody's behind. Everybody's behind in the story. But highway maintenance today started slurry seal, and they're in their final four days. They should be completed in the next four days. So that's where we stand on roads.
Okay, you said James is going to have the first layer of asphalt tomorrow?
Correct.
Now, how soon will they come back to do the top coat of asphalt?
Well, before that, they're going to have to do the concrete work, the approaches, and then they'll come and put the final layer down. So depending if everything is, what I've been told is true, next week, we should have some work on Hennepin done with the approaches, and they should get James at the same time.
So asphalt tomorrow?
Yes.
The concrete approaches?
Yes.
And then the second layer of asphalt on James?
Correct, and then the restoration, the restoration.
Restoration sod and all that.
I talked to the Hutch people this morning. I told them I want a definitive schedule on the completion of the projects. I'm there working.
I drove Farmington today, and the restoration work is pretty much done.
Well, that's just the rough.
Right. But yeah, there's more to be done, but I mean, that road's really looking nice.
Turned out pretty good today.
Yep. So I hope you do the same with James, all the streets, but. Yeah, so we're getting there. Okay, thanks for the update. I appreciate that. Okay, no public hearing tonight. Move on to item 11, approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 11A, 1, 2, and 3. Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 6-0. Moving on to action item, Building Inspection Services and Building Department Administrator. Mr. Miller.
Good evening again. I did want to give you just a brief update about the process that got us to this point. We were requested, actually at the awarding of Bucelli's one-year extension back in November of 2020, to seek proposals for Building Inspection Services and Building Department Administrator Services for the city. As you know, we outsourced these services many years ago. I developed a request for proposals to seek a company to provide the service to the city. While the cost was a factor, I was also looking for experience, familiarity with city operations, and the proper training on our computer program, which is called BSNA. Those were leading factors also in this recommendation. The proposal, which was listed on BidNet, that is a statewide program that many contractors subscribe to, so that, for example, say if you wanted to do mowing in a city, you would check that box. And whenever a proposal like that goes out, email is sent to your company so that you know that there's a proposal out to do that. So it was out for three weeks for the proposals. We, 13 companies reviewed that. BidNet tracks that for us, see how many people look at it, how many people downloaded, and we did receive, three proposals were submitted. There was a public opening of the proposals. I did that on September 13th at 2:00. I received and opened all three proposals, one from the Bucelli Group, McKenna, and Safebuilt. When we were reviewing all of those, each of the proposals wasn't exactly what I was looking for. In the RFP, I had listed 24 items, and for the most part, they met all those 24 items, but it wasn't exactly what I was looking for. And that is, Bucelli's included. They proposed another line item to separate the building official services out of the regular contract and have its own line item. I wanted to have all those services within one contract, so that we weren't chasing down a couple contracts or having an additional service in that contract. The most important thing in the consideration was to not have a disruption in inspection services and also create a backlog. Having a backlog when we're doing permits is quite a big inconvenience. You know, if we have a backlog, it creates a lot of hardship for residents, especially those that are selling their homes. So if they come in, and especially right now, houses are selling so fast that we can barely keep up with, you know, a house is on the market for four hours, and then we have to get inspections in because they want to close. It's really, I mean, it's a good thing and a bad thing, but it is hard to catch up with the real estate market also. And if a CVO is not done, a title company will not do a closing. And so it could hold up residents. I know some of you know that personally and professionally. So also, I've been working with the Building Department since I came, almost two and a half years ago now, to make process changes in that department. I've been working with the Building Department staff and Bucelli to look at the process change to provide excellent service. I like to have knowledgeable inspectors there to explain things to the public. They're available to answer questions at any times, and also so that people go through the process as easy as possible. I listed the rise of the revenue as a factor for implementing of the process change and compliance with the ordinance. I wanted to show that, you know, these process changes are making an improvement. And I'm glad to see that there is a rise because we're able to make sure that the work is being done properly, a permit is being pulled, it's being inspected. And I think that's important, especially when we're talking about the housing quality stock of the community. That's a big factor, is how much work is being done by homeowners that are pulling a permit and the work is being done properly. Also, those are, you know, important benchmarks for a Building Department, to make sure that the work is being done, permits are being pulled, and it's being inspected properly. Also, as you know, the rental ordinance is, we're in full force with that. It's being implemented. And we're also working across, you know, all facets of city government to make sure that we're finding those non-homesteaded properties and putting them into the rental program, so that we can improve, again, the quality of the housing stock and also the quality of the rental homes for people renting in the city. It's a three-year cycle, and to get them in and get them inspected is important. And when I say working across all facets, you know, we're looking at the water department, who's paying the water bills? Assessing, are they turning in the proper paperwork when they purchase the home? If they are non-homesteading it, they're saying it's a rental, we know how to direct them to the, we know how to direct them to the Building Department so that we can start the rental inspection process for them. So, you know, with all of these things being implemented, I would like to stay on this positive path that we've been going down. After the interview process, we asked Bucelli if they would continue with their current contract, and they did agree. It would be to keep the same rates and a four-year period with the renewal at the end of that contract. With that, I am recommending that the city rejects the proposal and enter into this agreement with Bucelli, so.
Okay. Motion's in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Jacobs.
I move to recommend that the City Council reject all responses to the RFP and to continue the contract for Building Inspection Services and Building Department Administration with the Bucelli Group, Livonia, Michigan, until December 31st, 2025, with annual extensions based on performance.
Support.
It's more from Councilmember Kirwin. Any comments from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Jacobs.
Besides, I think it's the best contract that we could have got. I do like the annual extensions that are based on performance. So if we do have, come up with an issue, we can make adjustments or do whatever we have to do. So I do like that part of it, checks and balance there. That's all. Thank you.
I like, I call Mr. Bucelli almost every day when I'm out looking at the roads, and he always responds. A lot of times, he knows I'm not happy with him, but it's the contractors, and he's the middleman. And getting the contractors out here on a sunny day, when, we get it when it rains, but, you know, I say, where are they at? You know, and he's calling them. I mean, it's like pulling teeth sometime, but he always responds, he's always out there. And for him to give us four more years without increasing his fees at the same rate, that's a good deal for the city. So I think it's a good deal. Any other comments from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Earl.
The one thing I will say too is, throughout this whole road reconstruction program, I've had citizens come up to me and specifically say, you know, they saw the Bucelli truck, they went up and asked them questions, and they were real friendly. They explained what was going on and why things were being done the way it was. So I appreciate that. You see them all the time at, on the roads where they're doing the work. So, you know, I appreciate that. I like the customer service aspect.
Thank you. Any other comments from the table, from the general public? Yes, ma'am.
So Jason from Black City. I had talked to all of you, actually, about Hillman Road, the 67,000 block where there was pitting in the middle, and also near the entrance where they redid where you drive in. I just want to make sure, because I haven't been over there in a few days, and if it's being closed down, saying that the road's done, I just want to make sure that that was followed up on and we'll check it out tomorrow.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, 6-0. At this time, we'll move on to public comments for items that were not on the agenda. Anybody wishing to speak, come up, state your name. There's a three-minute time limit. This is the opportunity to make a comment or a statement. It's not time to go back and forth with councilmembers. Yes, sir, come on.
John, name and sign, put the one during. This man, I had to throw my question, say it as believed and power him out the other there. One, if you're doing any work, a lot of people go by the public, whether you're going to block your driveway, you're going to block your street. Last Monday, I got the phone early in the morning, 7:30, mud on the street, I get out my car, move better. Why we blocked it? They're getting done the work last ten days. The next one is, there ain't no work, there's empty lot. And we have empty Loudon Harrison order. They're using that lot in the parking lot on Fridays. The Loudon Harrison order, they use for heavy construction equipment, mud, dirt, rock, kids playing in there. Who's owning for that? Got a minute, a little time left. Compliance officer, he should be riding around every Monday, Tuesday, and how, Saturday and Sunday. But look at all the scat that people are throwing out. If I gotta carry my shit out in the evening, they should do the same thing. Even on your street, on your corner, garbage is thrown out. My street's garbage is thrown out, sofas, everything, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. He should be patrolling Monday, Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Ms. Carefotos.
If I could ask the public about, on public events, can I say something about that first before I open my statement?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to say what a great tour we had. Our garden club had a big sale there, and we raised over $500. That's pretty normal for us, and we think that's awesome because we use that for a $1,000 scholarship that we gave to a garden school student. That makes me very happy. Recently, we had a person that we gave the scholarship to come back, came over Lucky Dog visit, we gave it two years ago, and his mom came in and said he had huge difference in his scholarship, he had books and a computer, and everything.
Good.
That's all I have to say with that. Last week was my first week attending the Garden City University. Our city manager addressed many issues. He discussed public complaints on social media. One of the common complaints being, why does the council usually vote for an issue 7 to 0, and why the council rarely has any discussions at the public meetings about what they're voting on? The city manager said, "There's no need for discussion. The council has enough information to make decisions for this community. That's why we voted for you." He told us that he and one, two, or three council members email back and forth, have doodle meetings and over-the-phone meetings to discuss each issue. He said these communications were legal because obviously it's not a forum for councilmembers. He also stated that he informs our council of everything that they need to know prior to a public meeting. Plus, they get an information packet days before, and they can do research. He continued to tell us that a councilperson, you sitting up there, is asking questions during a meeting, it is because you want to showboat, to look into the public, or pretend that you're politicians, when actually, you all have the answers right in front of you. Never mind that they may have a question that's not in the information pack. I felt this was a very inappropriate thing for our city manager to say about our councilmembers. All this information is not set well with me. Our council is supposed to discuss things. That's why it's called a public meeting. That's why it's called the Open Meeting Act. Per Page 7, Section 29 of the Open Meeting Act says, "A consensus-building process that equates to decision-making would fall under this act. Example, where board members use telephone calls or sub-form meetings, otherwise known as doodle meetings, to our city manager, to achieve the same intercommunication that could have been done here in a full board commission meeting, the member's conduct is susceptible to round-the-horn decision-making, which achieves the same effect as if the entire board had met publicly and formally cast its vote. A round-the-horn process violates the Open Meeting Act. Emails, phone calls, and doodle meetings are the above described round-the-horn meetings, and our council is violating the Open Meeting Act." So I ask our council again, why are you not having discussions at our public meetings about issues you're voting on? If you talk on the phone, email, or have a doodle meeting with one or two other councilmembers, don't you think the discussion with seven other people would make you more informed or at least let you hear another opinion before you cast your vote? Please don't ignore these questions. As residents, we want to know the answers. We want to hear what you think and why. We voted for you for a reason, and we want to hear your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? City managers' report.
All right, Mayor, I wasn't ready for that one, so I'll just give a quick explanation. I think that was a misrepresentation of actually what was said. Councilmembers were in the room also during that meeting, as well as a number of other citizens. The discussion was, why doesn't the council spend, I believe the words were, "Everybody down the line give their opinion on every issue." That was stated, exact words, "opinion." And my position was, this is a council meeting, but it's also a board meeting of a $50 million organization. A lot of decisions in their minds, or the information is discussed in their own minds, they've got their own discussion, I'm sorry, let me rephrase the whole thing. Let me go back to, because again, I wasn't ready for to explain this. I explained on a slide four different ways that I communicate with the council, and that's by telephone, by email, by stop eyes, people stopping, council stopping by, as well as doodle meetings. It sounded like the implication was there that I only talked to one, two, or three people. We talked to everybody, I just want to make that clear, about all different topics. The doodle meetings are ways that I could meet with one, two, or three councilpeople at one time. It doesn't mean that information is taken from one meeting and told the other group, here's what was said, and back and forth. That sounds like the round-the-horn discussion, which does not take place as the council knows. No way do I call any of you and say, here's what they're saying, here's what they're saying, here's what we're all saying. Not at all. But my point to the group was, the class, if they'd like to know what goes on in overall government, is, why don't we have a 7, why we have a 7-0 vote often on different topics? We're buying three police cars. We have a budget meeting four months earlier. Police chief asks for the cars. We discuss the cars, do we need them? We got them, it's budgeted, good. Comes to a council meeting, we're purchasing three police cars, and it seems to go pretty quickly. That's because the council's prepared, coming to that meeting, for buying police cars. Or any other issue. A statement was made at the meeting by somebody in the audience and said, well, you decide things that weren't even discussed. And I believe, as the mayor just did tonight, I actually said, he says, "The city manager, can you give us an update on this? City clerk, as he did tonight, can you explain what this is about? Mr. Bucelli or Mario come up to the microphone and explain." No topics are just voted on and there's no discussion. There's some statements made, but a lot of the questions are asked are pretty simple concepts. They're not, as the council knows, have been on here for years. There's not a lot of interesting stuff that goes on. It is some basic purchases or services that we offer. So the idea of, and again, this was an open discussion with a group of citizens that are part of the class. This was not something that was put out to the world as far as the internet goes. But the question was, there's several types of councilmen that I've had experience with, as I clearly said, they're not in any of this, on this board currently. I've been doing this for 25 to 30 years. And here's what I found. And as I went through the examples of types of council, which is what this class is about, is teaching people, when they watch these meetings, what they should look for and expect. The statement was made, a person who comes to a council meeting as a councilperson and asks a whole lot of questions is either unprepared or knows the answers to the questions and just is somewhat showboating, if I can even use that word, of having people sitting at home, I believe my exact words were, saying, boy, that person's really interested, look at the questions. And as I said, some people have passion on one side or the other, and certainly asking a few questions, that's not a problem. And I believe it was re-asked of me, will somebody ask questions? That means that they're just showboating? No. Asking a lot of questions, they're probably unprepared, or they're asking questions they know the answers to at that point. So when you're watching that, that doesn't mean that that councilperson is the most engaged, thank goodness they're asking these questions, nobody else is asking questions. Sometimes it's that person, everyone else at the table knows what that person's doing. It was just, again, behind the scenes on how government works and what to see and what to expect. So I think a lot of the presentation was just mistaking out of context of what was actually said. A whole lot more was said in between there. So again, I wasn't prepared to explain the overall presentation. But speaking of GCU, I want to thank the students that came to the first class at this point. We have a second, they're going to be meeting with Public Works next week, and then after the new year, we're going to be starting another class. So for those that are interested. So for those that are interested, a six-part class to learn about what goes on overall in government. And any questions were asked, by the way, we answered any questions that were asked. Fire marshal, just as a side, congratulations, Brian Fineran, the Garden City Fire Marshal, just completed Eastern Michigan's University School of Fire and Command. Ten-month program took them past traditional fire operation methods and prepared them for the technological skills to make a major impact on our fire department and the city as a whole. So congrats to our Fire Marshal, Brian Fineran. And one last thing, the Golden Book is being printed right now as we speak, 2022. It's going to be mailed out to every single home in the next few weeks. For those that may remember the 2019 book, it has phone numbers, code, code violations to be aware of. Even the printer noticed the new section that we have in here is, if you're going to sell your property, what to look for, what to be prepared for before the inspections start. She thought that was fascinating because she's selling her mother's house and didn't realize some of those things. So it'll help our inspection process if the houses are more repaired, as well as some good department information. So this will be mailed out to everybody's house very shortly. The Golden Book, please look for that. And that's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Earl?
Thank you, Mayor. First, to the Chili Cook Off, it was a great event. It was phenomenal. It seems, it seems to me like every year it gets bigger and bigger, which is good. Adolo Chili, I liked how it was spread out more this year with, between the Chili's. Gave a little more room and so keep it up. For the city manager, 31226 Ford Road, 31226 Ford Road. This is like my fifth request for DTE, who plans on spending millions of dollars apparently. Can they fix the street light? Also, in front of Mr. Pizza, the utility pole that's been broken for over a year, year and a half, that's leaning over the business, can they come out and fix that?
Is that light fixed?
The light.
They fixed that light finally? The light started itself?
Oh, the light might be, no, it's just a utility pole.
Okay, I got it.
And then I've had two or three people come to me about the crosswalk at the high school. That's the county. Apparently that's not working. And last, some months ago, I can't remember the exact meeting or dates, the county Wayne forced us to agree to funding this project that they have for wastewater and sewage. And we see the outcomes of that. We've never had flooding like this before. All right. These systems are not so, just, it, it rained a lot is not an excuse for the amount of flooding and destruction that's happened to the citizens. Not just, and I've talked to several different cities, people who've never had flooding issues before and they're all getting the same thing. So clearly it's not just because it's raining hard. It's not the city's system, it's the county that, and, and they just forced us to spend millions of dollars on this and it's, it's crap. It's ridiculous. I want the county to come out here to our meeting and explain to the residents what they're going to do for the residents. FEMA, you know, I was impressed, they came out right away, they stayed here for a long time. I've talked to a lot of people, they have helped, but obviously they're not giving them all the money. Some people didn't have the right insurance. Some people are out tens, twenties, $30,000 worth of stuff, damage. So I want the county out here to explain to us why their system failed, why we're paying more money for a system that failed, and what they're going to do about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Squires?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, the Chili Cook Off was a great event, very crowded, a lot of people. And I want to give a hats off to DPW this year for bringing out some of the new vehicles. The kids really had a great time being able to get on top, on them and sit in them and along with the fire department and police department. I think that's a great addition to the event itself. And I also wanted to mention the ordinance department, following up on properties that are reported. I happened to run into recently, someone had reported a home in my neighborhood that was in disrepair and he came out and gave some tickets. And I ran into him on a Saturday. He was out there checking to see if there had been any progress made. So, you know, if anybody thinks they're not working, out there working, they are. And that's not the only place I've seen them. And other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes, I have a few things. First, congratulations to Fire Marshal, Brian Fineran. Good job. He has made a great difference in the community since he's, since we brought on the Fire Marshal. He was a good choice and he's done a great job. Again, good job to the Chili Cook Off. I was there, had a lot of fun. Lot of people, weather cooperated, so that worked out. And I agree, I like the way the tents were set up this year. I don't know what would happen if it rained, but it didn't. So that was good. On the roads, and I know this isn't on the Bucelli Group, but I know we, I specifically, a year or two ago, started complaining that the work should be substantially complete earlier than what we're, we're getting. And supposedly that was going to be written into the contract, we're going to be done earlier, you know. By substantially, I took that as basically, we're waiting till the, the weather breaks so we can put the sod down and we're good to go. And we're going into middle of October, getting closer to November, and we're still putting asphalt, concrete, everything else down. I'd like to look in the future again at getting stronger wording in there so these guys have to get this stuff done sooner. Residents shouldn't have to go through this all year. And they can say, the, the companies can say whatever they want about rain. We haven't had that much rain on that many days. We've had a lot of rain, but not everyday rain. So it's not a good excuse with me. For this gentleman, as far as the mud and everything, I, I thought at one point we, something like Cambridge, where we required them to sweep, start sweeping up every day or every other day, whatever, to keep the dust and the mud and everything else out. I don't know if that's being done or not, but it should be done. I've had construction around my house and it's, it's not fun going through that mud and stuff. So I don't know if that needs to be written into the contract or, to me, it seems like more common sense that you make a mud hole, you know, on the, on the, on the street, clean it up so the residents don't have to deal with that. On some better notes, we have a couple of events coming up. First, this Saturday, October 16th, we had the Halloween Egg Hunt, which the Garden City Parks and Rec is putting on. It'll be at the City Park Ballfields. It starts at 8:00 PM. It's free. Basically what it is, is about eight o'clock, they're going to turn the lights out. The kids, and there's three different age groups, basically zero to 10-year-olds, but three different age brackets in there. They will get a glow stick and they will get a, the lights will go out and they have to go find eggs on the ballfield in their age, age group. You need to bring a bag and they will, you, you get whatever eggs you get. And there's, I'm sure there's stuff in there. There's a cas, costume contest, different contests, and also just before eight o'clock, the zombies from the Dance Express will perform Thriller. So I heard that's gonna be quite a show out there. So that's this Saturday, again, 8:00 PM, free at the ballfield. And next, October 28th, that's a Thursday, the Garden City Business Alliance is putting on the Trunk or Treat. And that is from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And this year, that is at the Radcliffe Center over by Schoolcraft College. There's a thing on the screen, a visual, you need that QR scan that you can go to their website, get it, and that is a ticket for $1. They're limiting it to 2,000 kids this year. So if you want that, and it's children eight, zero to 14, and you must have that ticket on the QR, from the QR code. And again, that is October 28th, 5:30 to 7:00, and that's by the Garden City Business Alliance.
They don't sell any at that night.
They don't sell any tickets at the door. You have to get the QR scan off the website and I know I bought it, so it's, it's not real hard, but somebody like me can do it.
Anybody can do it.
Anybody can do it. Every two-year-old do it. But no, it should, that should be another good event. They moved it around again, so it's, should be good. Anyways, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Kerwin.
Sorry. So I really love all the events that the Parks and Rec are putting together. They have come up with some great ideas. I absolutely love this egg hunt. Really different, glow in the dark. I think the kids are going to love it. I'm going to come up and look at it because I think it sounds like fun, too. One of my favorite events is coming and it's Skeleton Nights at the Straight Farm House. That is also a free event. It is such a good time there. Take your family, go up there. I believe they're having it indoors and outdoors this year. So good time. And then I also got to run to the Chili Cook Off between a wedding and homecoming, so I didn't get to stay long, but it looked packed. It looked busier than I've ever seen it before. So good job for the DDA to putting that together, Teresa and Kim. And I just want to say thank you to the Garden City High School. While the homecoming was a little untraditional, it was outside, the kids had an absolute blast. A little bit of normalcy from last year, they didn't get to do anything last year. So this dance, they just had a great time. They had kids crowd surfing, they, I mean, they just lived it up and they had a, had a great time. So that was good to see. And that's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Lynch?
Basically, everybody's covered all the things I had on my list here. So I'm just going to congratulate Saturday, every department that was a part of Saturday. It was phenomenal. And we couldn't do the police and the fire inside the buildings, so the fact that they set them up outside and still covered everything that they needed to cover. And they did an excellent job and DPW bringing in their trucks. My grandson loved being up in the Big Salt truck, that's all I can say. He talked about it the whole time, besides sitting in the back of the car where the bad guys sit. He liked that, too. And the Chili Cook Off, my gosh, I was parked way on the other side. It was just packed. There was no way that you were going to get in at certain points in the day. But the Afterglow, too. Don't forget the Afterglow because it turned out very nice. And I can't remember Bonnie's group's name.
The Working Girls.
The Working Girls, thank you. They were great and they played until nine o'clock at night. So what an exciting day we had on Saturday and we have so many more events that are coming up. We look forward to them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I have one item. I just wanted to give you an update about the scanning of the health records, the birth and death records that we had. We have completed the death records portion of our project. Over about 33,000 records were scanned in. We received all of the data. We've been checking it. We've been utilizing it for people to come to the counter and purchase. It's great. We, we search by the name, we pull it up, print it, and no digging in files, looking at paper copies. Also, what was important was the quality of the scan. It's been great so far. We've had no issues, so I'm really happy with that. We moved on to the next phase, which is birth records. We sent the birth records from 1928 to 1960 to be scanned. We're going to do those kind of in, after 1960, then we're going to do them in kind of decade portions. What that does mean is that you, if you're born between 1928, 1960 at Garden City Hospital, we do not have the record right now. So we have a way for you to get it through the state, but we can't provide the normal service because those records are out. We're looking, I know they're working on them right now. I've received a couple of calls from the scanning company, but we're looking forward to that process getting done and providing better service to the citizens, so.
So in other words, if you're 1960 through now, if you have intentions of getting your birth certificate, get it now.
Please do. Thank you.
You all set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I also want to brag on everybody on the Chili Cook Off. This event is getting bigger every year. And I don't know if the residents realize how many volunteers it takes to put something like this on. And the DDA, the volunteers to make it happen, it's just a phenomenal event. And then our open houses are getting bigger each year. It used to be just the fire department. Then a couple of years ago, the police department started and this year, DPW joined in and brought all their equipment over. So for the residents to get to see all this equipment and the police department, fire department, it just, we got great employees and showing everybody all the, all the stuff that we have and what they pay for and they can see where their money goes, all the, all that equipment that we bought and police vehicles, fire vehicles. We got a new fire truck coming, which will take a year to get built, but it shows the residents where, where their money's going when we buy these. Congrats to Fire Marshal Fenneran on his 10-month school. That's awesome. We've given you guys a lot of information tonight because we don't have a community newspaper. The Santa Ride will be on Thursday night, December 16th. I believe we leave City Hall 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM, Thursday night, December 16th. The route will be on the city website before then. Always check the city website for everything. GardenCityMI.org. You can get council agendas, see your water bill, see your taxes, planning commission meetings, park and recs meetings, come, upcoming events. So you want to check out Garden City's website. Also, to the residents, because it's just a month away, Veterans Day, we couldn't have last year because of COVID. We're planning on having Veterans Day ceremony, but we cannot have it at the Old Erie Auditorium. It's under construction. I talked to Derek Fisher, the superintendent, and it's not supposed to be done until middle of December. So Veterans Day this year is going to be what I call Garden City West, Garden City Middle School. I still got to call it Garden City West. So we're going to use the gymnasium at the Garden City Middle School for Veterans Day, November 11th at 11:00 AM. 11, 11, 11. That's all you got to remember. Please come and support our veterans, but I need every, we got to get that out on the website, too, because everybody's used to going to Old Erie. It will be at the Garden City Middle School. And I'll say that at the next meeting, too. So council, I hope you all attend. It's usually a great event, patriotic event, and it's great to pay homage to our veterans for the freedom that we have. Very good information given out tonight from everybody. Thank you, residents, for coming out. And no further business, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.